I'll do order the meeting of the village trustees. Roll call, please.
Trustee Peck.
Here.
Trustee Rassich. Trustee Wajowski.
Here.
Trustee Benucci.
Here.
Trustee Lamb.
Here.
Trustee Arwark.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
The rise for the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're seeking a motion to appoint Trustee Benucci as this evening's chair.
They're moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Trustee Arwark.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries. Presidential comments?
We have a proclamation this evening on behalf of Mayor Collins. We're declaring October 24th, 2016, United Nations Day in the Village of Plainfield. Whereas, the world continues to seek the road of peace and international cooperation through the United Nations. Whereas, the United Nations is a unique organization of independent countries that have voluntarily joined together to work for world peace and economic and social progress, and is the foremost organization in the world working for women's rights and the advancement of women, as well as the health and development of communities across the world. Whereas, United States support and of leadership in the United Nations is essential to successfully achieving the goals and objectives of the world organizations. And whereas, all citizens of the United States and throughout the world are encouraged to observe the birthday of the United Nations on October 24th, 2016. Therefore, Michael P. Collins, President of the Village of Plainfield, has proclaimed October 24th, 2016, as United Nations Day in the Village of Plainfield, Illinois, to recognize the efforts and commitment of Zonta International and the Zonta Club of the Joliet Area, Rotary International and the Rotary Club of Plainfield, in support and partnership with the United Nations in achieving their goals. I just had one comment on that. As a past president of Plainfield Rotary, I know the good works of these people, so thank you very much for all the representatives that are here this evening, and the good work continues. That's for me.
Trustees' comments?
I'd like to thank the students in the audience. We have students here tonight from Joliet Catholic, I believe. Your participation in government is key. You guys are all about, I'm guessing seventeen, eighteen years old now. You have an election coming up in a month. Those of you who are old enough to vote, you should vote. Every vote counts. For example, my last election, it was a tie. So had one of you eighteen-year-olds voted for me, we wouldn't have gone through all the drama. So don't ever let anybody tell you your vote doesn't count. It does. Your participation in government is key. People that are in government now look to your counsel on the future and what you guys want to see. So don't ever think you guys don't matter, because you do. And we love to hear your opinions.
The fact that you guys came on audit night is completely, well, for those of us that love doing audits, they're great, but yeah, good luck.
Are there any other trustee comments?
I just wanted to take a moment and say thank you to staff. Alan and his team, along with chief and some of his department as well, for helping out with a resident that voiced a concern regarding some traffic issues. And staff was able to start an analysis, meet with the residents, and start addressing some of those concerns. So thank you guys very much. I know it's greatly appreciated by the residents. Thank you.
I want to comment, it's nice to have Trustee Benucci back with a voice. On Wednesday, she wasn't talking.
Well, you're one person that says that, maybe, I don't know.
I have one other comment, though. Now that we have an economic development specialist, one of the things we've been doing for the Historic Preservation Commission is keeping track of properties which might be on the demolition list. I'm not suggesting we demolish retail businesses, but we may want to consider listing opportunities, vacancies. When things are coming in, maybe give us some advance notice. The question I get most often from whoever I talk to is, who's going there? When? If we could maybe consider putting together that list, making it available, it might be something to help. I think it could be a positive sign that says, we got opportunities here, let's take advantage of them.
Are there any other trustee comments? If not, this would be the time for public comments. There are no public comments, and we'll proceed with the business meeting. We're seeking a motion to approve the agenda.
Moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Trustee Arwark.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries. We're seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda to include minutes of the board meeting held on October 3rd, bills paid and bills payable reports for October 17th, cash and investments, revenue and expenditure reports for September, and approval of the intergovernmental agreement with the Forest Preserve District of Will County regarding the Norman Town Trail.
They're moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve items A through D under the consent agenda. Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Trustee Arwark.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the 2015-2016 audit presentation.
Thank you. Well, the excitement has become a reality. We are here with the fiscal year 16 annual audit. I'm going to let Jim Savio speak for multiple reasons tonight. One is because he's the lead on the audit, and second, my voice is leaving me, so it'll be easier for you to hear him. He'll go over some of the highlights of the audit. Highly recommend reading it from page to page, it's very exciting. But as a positive, the village did have a good, a solid fiscal year, so I'll let Jim explain a little bit of the details of the audit.
Thanks, Tracy. And thank you for inviting me here tonight to present the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended April 30th, 2016. I also want to thank at this point Brian, Tracy, Colleen, and the entire staff for all their assistance during the entire audit process. Went very well again this year. They were able to answer all our questions and provide us with all of the information that we requested. What I'd like to do is just point out a few of the highlights of the comprehensive annual financial report, as well as the auditor's communication to the board of trustees. And then at that point, I'd be happy to answer questions that you may have. I'll start on page one of the comprehensive annual financial report. That's the first page after the financial section tab, if you have a hard copy. This is the independent auditor's report. The only three pages that we're responsible for as auditors is the independent auditor's report. Management is responsible for the rest of the comprehensive annual financial report. And those responsibilities are listed out here on page one. Turning over to page two, up at the very top is the opinion paragraph. Again, this year, we issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that we can provide to the village. And then right below that, we had a change in accounting principle this year. We implemented Gatsby Statement 68, accounting and financial reporting for pensions, as well as Gatsby Statement 71, which was an amendment of Gatsby 68. And what that did, for the first time, the village is reporting a net pension liability on the face of the financial statements. Previously, that information was only in the footnotes and required supplementary information. And I want to point out to you, emphasize, the liabilities owner recorded on the government-wide financial statements and on the water and sewer funds. So in your governmental funds, like your general fund, it's not recorded in that fund. Turning over to M-DNA, page one, which is a couple pages after the independent auditor's report. This is prepared by Tracy and provides a great overview of the village's financial position and changes in financial position for the year. It also will highlight any significant changes that may have occurred during the year, including the implementation of Gatsby Statement Number 68 and 71. And it also provides some comparative data that you can't find elsewhere in the report. So I tell you every year, if you only want to read one thing in the comprehensive annual financial report, to read the M-DNA provides a great overview of the village's finances. Turning over to page four, actual page four, not M-DNA page four. Page four and five, and then six and seven are, what I referred to previously, are the government-wide financial statements. The statement of net position or your balance sheet is on page four and five, and that presents the consolidated financial statements of the village. So it's going to include all of the funds of the village except for the fiduciary fund, which is the police pension fund. It has a long-term focus, similar to what you would find in a for-profit corporation. So it includes capital assets as well as long-term debt. And it's split out, as you'll see, between governmental activities and then business-type activities. The business-type activities column is your water and sewer fund. Couple things I'll point out with Gatsby 68 that changed on page four. About two-thirds of the way down the page is deferred outflows of resources. You'll see two new deferred outflows of resources for your participation in the IMRF pension fund, as well as a police pension plan. And deferred outflows are basically expenses that relate to future periods, and these have a positive impact on net position. The opposite of that is deferred inflows of resources on the next page. These are going to be reductions of expense that relate to future periods. You'll see we also have deferred inflows for IMRF and police pension. And then the net pension liability is included right above that in the liability section due in more than one year. There's about 2.9 million, I believe, and 14.8 million for IMRF and police pension liability included in that $38.8 million figure. And there's more detail on that in footnote six in the long-term debt footnote, as well as footnote 11, which covers the pensions. And then finally, on page five, your unrestricted net position is about $6.9 million for governmental activities. It was about $16 million last year. That's largely due to the implementation of 68 and recording that net pension liability. The business-type activities unrestricted net position pretty much stayed even, gained about $500,000 from the previous year. Turning to page six and seven is the statement of activities or your income statement. Two things I'll point out on page seven, your change in net position or your net income for governmental activities was a loss of about $9 million. That's largely due to depreciation expense of about $15.4 million. And business-type activities, small increase of about $336,000. And then right below that, the change in accounting principle, this is the implementation of 68. So we had to go and restate net position as of the beginning of the year. That's the effect of that. There's additional detail on that in footnote 13. Turning to page eight is the balance sheet for governmental funds. Now, this, these have short-term focus, almost a budgetary focus. So there's no capital assets, no long-term debt. So it's just current spendable resources that we're interested in on these financial statements. So there's no net pension liability recorded here. One thing I'll point out, your general fund is your first column. On page nine, all the way down at the bottom, your fund balance was about $8.5 million unassigned fund balance. That's 40% of your current year expenditures, which is in accordance with your fund balance policy. And that policy's on page 25, footnote 1J. And then turning to page 11 is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for governmental funds or your income statement. Again, I'll just point out in the general fund, you had excess deficiency of revenues before, other financing sources of about $2.6 million. Last year was about $1.8 million. And after transfers, the net change in the governmental fund was about $321,000. And real quickly, page 15, I'll just point out the income statement for your water and sewer fund. Operating income, little bit of a loss, mainly due to depreciation expense of about $3 million, which is a non-cash transaction. Cash flows were actually positive. And then down below, change in net position, your net income, like I said before, about $336,000 increase. Turning to page 38, we're into the footnotes of the financial statements now. Just want to point out footnote 11 has a lot more detail. A lot of it's changed with Gatsby 68, but a lot more detail on your participation in IMRF, as well as the police pension fund. A lot of good info there, if you're interested. Page 41, I'll just point out, I talk about the net pension liability. This gives you a little more detail of the changes in net pension liability, about halfway down the page on page 41. And it basically shows your total pension liability, which is the liability that the actuary determines that you owe. The planned fiduciary net position are the assets you have set aside to pay those liabilities. And the difference between the two, A minus B, is that net pension liability. So that gives you a little more detail of how it changed during the fiscal year. Same info for police pension on page 50. And then turning to page 56, as I mentioned previously, footnote 13 shows you that detail of that change in accounting principle. So that's the restatement, detail of the restatement that we talked about previously. And page 59, we're into the required supplementary information. Page 59 and 60 show you your schedule of employer contributions. So it shows the actuarially determined contributions, what you actually contributed, and if there was an excess or deficiency in those contributions, as well as the contributions as a percentage of covered payroll. And that's, IMRF is on page 59, police pension on page 60. And then turning over to page 62. 62 is IMRF, and 63 is the police pension fund, but this shows your schedule of changes in employer net pension liability and related ratios. This is similar info to what we saw in the footnotes, but this will eventually build out to 10 years of information, so we'll keep adding years. So you'll be able to see trend data on how the pension funds are being funded. And on 62, about two-thirds of the way down the line, you'll see the fiduciary net position as a percentage of total pension liability or your funded ratio, you're at about 82.5% for IMRF. 63 shows the exact info, the exact same info for police pension, and you'll see the funded ratio is about 68% for the police pension fund. And finally, on the very next page, the schedule of investment returns. Again, this will build out to 10 years of information, but that just shows you the money-weighted rate of return for the investments in the police pension fund. That's all I have on the comprehensive annual financial report. Turning over to the auditor's communication to the board of trustees. If you look at the table of contents, there's some required communication that we have to have with the board. We have that every year. Pretty routine this year, except for the communication of implementing Gatsby Statements 68 and 71. Also want to point out, too, typically, we'll communicate to you audit adjustments that we find. So there are adjustments that we find as part of the audit process that otherwise wouldn't have been found. Just want to point out that we had no audit AJEs, and we had no past AJEs, which are AJEs that are deemed to be immaterial, so we don't book them. So great job by the staff. Very rare that you will have an audit where we have no adjustments and no past adjustments. So great job, again, by Tracy and her staff. And then page six is the communication of deficiencies and internal control. Again, good news there on page six. You'll notice that we had no new comments during the current year. So no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, no deficiencies or other comments. So again, great job. And then finally, page nine shows you the status of our comments from the prior year. You'll see deficiency number one is substantially implemented, and then deficiencies two and three have been implemented during fiscal year 16. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
I've got one question for you. On page seven, you list Government Accounting Standards Board edicts or mandates, if you will. I don't pretend to understand all that they're trying to get at, but will any of those impact cash flow for the village?
Not cash flow, no. Financial reporting.
Somebody's got to do some work, I get that, but at least it doesn't hurt our bottom line in terms of revenue versus expenses.
Yeah, not actual cash flow, inflow and outflow. The big ones that'll change are Gatsby Statements 74 and 75, and they'll basically do for other post-employment benefits, like healthcare, what 68 did for pensions. So it'll bring that liability onto the face of the financial statements. Again, only on the government-wide financial statements and in the water and sewer fund, not in your general fund.
Tracy, you going to talk about some things, too, or not?
Only if there are any questions.
Okay, well, let me go to your questions. Seems to me that, I think you kind of alluded to it, the, not, in the past years, we've not covered depreciation on the water and sewer. This year, it looks like we've covered a good chunk of the depreciation.
Correct.
That's excellent progress, then, if you will.
I think Alan can speak to a little bit additional water sales for this last fiscal year, if I remember correctly, or?
Yeah, we had some positive numbers as far as water sales are concerned, too, as well, and that's reflected in providing some additional cash within that account, which helped cover some of the depreciation. And keep in mind that we're also actively working on a capital improvement program for water and sewer. So the replacement of the water and sewer lines along Route 30, which the state is assisting with us financially, helps us in upgrading the system. So the older the system goes, and the board is well aware of this, but for the benefit of the public, the older the system is and the less upgrades that are made in replacements, the more depreciation that you're going to have, and it's going to build up over time, and it's going to create a problem. So at least we have an active capital program, and that helps us for future depreciation numbers, too, as well.
Yeah, I'm delighted to see you start to cover some of that. I noticed the water usage was down about 10% from last year, which is interesting. We've been going up steadily, and this year, you're about 10 million cubic feet less than last year in total. This comes out of the back, the statistic, anybody wants to know where this stuff comes from, it's the statistics at the back. There's some fascinating things back there. If you want to paw through them, there's also a lot more than you ever want to know, probably, too, but.
It was a relatively wet, cooler summer, so the water sales weren't as high, and we encourage people to exercise water conservation. Again, the water loss is at a record low here within the community, 2% or less than 2%, which is beneficial. And then based on our contract with American Lake Water Company, we only pay for the gallons that go through the meter. So if our residents use less water, we pay less in water fees and charges, too, as well. So there's a benefit on the other side, too, as well.
The other thing that, we had less planned for capital improvements this past fiscal year. Route 30 didn't progress as quickly on the expense side, on the water side, that we needed to spend. So you'll see even the budget to actuals, our expenditures were down. Not to say that we have a lot of capital improvements to do, it just the last fiscal year was less than what we anticipated as well, so that helped with the bottom line.
Another question for Tracy. One of the things we, for planning for the budget for the last several years, we've had a dip in equalized value of assets. And it looks like we finally started to make an uptick, if you will, so we can start, stop penalizing ourselves in terms of revenue and look a little bit more positive on what we would expect out of property taxes.
Yeah, we purposefully took a hit in the, in the previous two fiscal years. There was a slight uptick this year. The revenue still that come in off of property tax is for the Village of Plainfield are at the level that they were in 2008, which was, so we've either stayed at that level or been less than that since 2008. And that was a strategic effort by the board to not pass along a burden onto our residents during very lean times. And about three years ago, the residents asked it, to ask the board that we set the rate and live by it. So we did take a year or two where we saw a reduction, but yeah, this past year, we saw a slight increase, so.
Yeah, that's great progress. The overall report is extremely comprehensive. It doesn't make very good reading, or not pleasurable reading, anyway, but it's very comprehensive. There's a lot of information in there, which also documents the fact the village is very well-run. It's obvious based on the audit report and also the kind of stuff we see on a regular basis. One other thing that's happened, if you look back in the numbers, back in 2008, I believe, we had 146 employees. It went down to 148, I believe, and then we went down to 126, so we lost 42 employees.
Yeah, at our highest, we had 168 employees in 2008.
168, I'm sorry. Now we've regained 10, which is a very promising sign, too. It allows us to expand a little bit of the services we've been providing, and it's, actually follows from the excellent work that was done to get us to this point, making progress, so. Anyway, congratulations on the outstanding report. You ought to win the award again, or whatever, for a transparent report.
We'll try.
We dropped down, just for the rest of the audience, so that you understand what was being said there. We were at 168 employees in 2008. During the downturn, we dropped down to 126 employees, and today, we're at 136 employees. That's what Trustee Lamb was getting at, that we've gained 10. I don't want you to think that we're at 178 employees. I knew what you were talking about, I just.
I know you do. I just want to say, they made real progress, and it's nice to see, because it's, we've come out of the downturn and come out of it very strongly, and due to the credit of the staff to have pulled us through, so.
Tracy, the return on the police pension appears to be lower this year by about five points. Do you, seven points? Okay, do you anticipate any increase next year for next budgetary year? Are the village's contribution to try to make up the difference?
Well, there's a combination of the actuarial calculation, which has a standard assumption within that interest rate return, and what actually happens. So what will happen is we will have that actuarial. We've actually already gotten the preliminary numbers on what we need to fund for next year, and it's, I would consider substantially higher than what we're looking at now, $200,000. Yeah, and some of it isn't even direct, it's indirectly related to last year's return, because it's a historical lookback. So it's only a portion of their calculation was this current fiscal year. So it does come into play, absolutely. So you will see when we get to the tax levy discussion, which is in the beginning of November, our tax levy request is going to be higher for police pension because of the actuarial calculation that's involved. So that will impact.
How much accounting standards affect the current numbers? I mean, is it, is it an artificial inflation, or is it not?
Well, it, it isn't the Gatsby standards. There's a separate standard for, that the actuarial world passed along, which is a modified mortality table that changes how that's done, and it actually has about a 20% impact on our calculation.
Yeah, Gatsby 68 is purely on accounting, the accounting side. How you, how you fund it is a totally separate decision. It can even include different actuarial assumptions. So it's, 68 kind of divorced the, you know, contributions and funding from the accounting for it. So 68 is almost exclusively on the accounting side.
That's mortality study they did on the police department.
I'd have to look and see what table that our actuarial uses. I do know that the state has a more conservative calculation, meaning they fund it, I believe it's 80 or 90%. We fund it 100% without calculation. So we're overfunding based on what the state requirements are from year to year. And the mortality table, I'd have to look. We actually get a couple actuarial results back. I'll have to see which one it is that we utilize, but we're always a little bit more aggressive on the funding side.
Yeah, mortality tables were updated recently. I don't know if on the contribution side, but I know on the, on the Gatsby 68 side. And that, that drives the increase in the liability more than pretty much anything else at this point. So you can have bad years, and yeah, like Tracy said, that's going to affect the contribution in succeeding years, if you, if you have bad investment years. But really, the previous few years, that's the mortality tables and updating those. People are just living longer, so you're paying out benefits a lot longer than you did even 10, 20 years ago.
I think the chief of police has said at previous meetings that the department is aging a good majority of people, so it just accelerates things for the public.
Question for staff. A lot of the data that we've been looking at, you know, is not in slideshow or on television tonight, or for the audience to be able to actually see for themselves. Is all this information on our website already, or going to be made available on our website for residents that are so interested in to go over this data?
Yep, the audit and the management letter, both are posted on our website.
Excellent. Thank you, Brian.
Are there any other comments or questions? Now, we'd be seeking board consideration of a motion to accept the Village of Plainfield audit and management letter for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand and sixteen fiscal year.
I'm moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trust your work.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Wash U Car Wash. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number thirty-two eighty, granting approval of a special use for drive-through operation for the proposed Wash U Car Wash to be located on a portion of Lot Two of the Prairie Creek North-South First Subdivision, subject to the stipulations noted in the staff report.
I'm motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Hearing none, I'll proceed with the roll. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trust your work.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to approve the preliminary slash final plat of subdivision of the Prairie Creek North-South Second Subdivision, subject to the stipulations noted in the staff report.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Hearing none, I'll proceed with the roll. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trust your work.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to approve the site plan review for the proposed Wash U Car Wash on Lot Two-O-One of the Prairie Creek North-South Second Subdivision, subject to the stipulations noted in the staff report.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
I just had one quick question. I think those driveways were gonna be realigned on the southern part of that property. Was that completed?
Yeah, the driveways have been modified to either eliminate any encroachment onto adjacent properties, or are constructed pursuant to property owner approval.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Now, the motion was made and seconded to approve the site plan review for Wash U Car Wash. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trust your work.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries.
I have a couple comments before we do move on, though. For the students who are here, it looked like we went through that very quickly. It's actually come before us a couple different times, and this is kind of the last step to get a final approval. The other comment I have is a procedural thing that the planning staff is doing. The format outstanding with the cover shows the variances, shows the plan commission vote, and we've also attached the plan commission meetings, which are outstanding pertaining to this particular document. I highly recommend we continue both of those practices. I think they're very informative. It gives us a real good chance to grasp the important things before we vote, so, nice work.
Next item on the agenda is zoning code text amendments. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to direct the village attorney to draft an ordinance granting approval of the zoning code text amendments set forth in the staff report.
Move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Hearing none, I'll proceed with the roll. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trust your work.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Administrators' report?
None tonight.
Management Services' report?
I have one item for consideration tonight. I didn't know where he was. IT Director Rick Kazankos here to speak a little bit more clearly to what it is that we're requesting for approval, so I'll let Rick explain.
Good evening. As you may recall, a couple months ago, the village board approved the purchase of an EMC storage array for the village. We did receive the array, and during implementation, I found that the support that we received was not up to our standards. So I've worked with CDW to effect a return on their device, so I'm coming before the board to get authorization to purchase a similar storage device from a different manufacturer. It will be from T-Gel Corporation. It's a T-three-one-hundred hybrid storage array from CDW, again, at a cost of twenty-four thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and forty cents. It's about fourteen hundred dollars more than the previous purchase. However, this array does give us more capacity than the previous purchase, so I'm looking for authorization to do that.
Only question, Rick, I had was on the vendor. The vendor is not, see, see whoever it is that is selling it to us. The vendor's the manufacturer, as you use the word in the document.
Correct. The, the vendor is the manufacturer of the device. CDW is the reseller for that vendor.
So it wasn't the person selling it that didn't back it up, it was the person who supplied the equipment that wouldn't back up their particular...
Right. It was EMC, which is part of the Dell family. And I've had previous good support from Dell, it's just maybe this division wasn't up to the same standard. So rather than putting all the village's production data on the systems we use every day on this device with the questionable support, I figured we'd go with a different manufacturer.
Good to see, huh? That's good.
I trust your judgment. And getting a return of that size on equipment that's been opened from a resar like that is usually a little bit difficult, so thanks for all of your hard work and your diligence.
CDW really stepped up and was our go-to for dealing with the manufacturer.
Excellent.
Echo that. That's unusual, Rick, so good work on that. Are there any other comments or questions?
Motion?
Sure.
I move that we authorize a purchase of a T-Gel, T-three-one-hundred hybrid storage array, support and implementation services from CDW-G at a cost of twenty-four thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and forty cents.
Second. The motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trust your work.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries.
Thank you.
That's all I had, thanks.
Engineers' report?
No report.
Planning Department report?
No report.
Building Department report?
I have to report for the Building Department and Code Enforcement for September two thousand and sixteen. Any questions?
Also includes the Code Enforcement, which is, for the first time for that.
Yeah, they've been with our department since the middle of July.
Nice summary of their activities as well, so, good report.
Public Works' report?
Just have one item this evening. As the board is aware, at the wastewater treatment facility, we recycle just about all of the products that we receive. The water gets cleaned, and the clean water gets discharged to the river. The biosolids are collected, compressed, de-watered, and we actually have a contractor that removes the biosolids and uses it at the area of farm fields as fertilizer. We have a four-year contract with the existing contractor. This is the second year of the contract. As per the contract, it can only increase by the CPI, which is less than one percent, and so we're recommending continuation of the contract, that's all. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I believe Mr. Kissel is here, too, as well, to answer questions.
One thing that's not in the report is the cost per pound or something, is it something like ten cents?
Yeah, it actually, they're two different items. Cost per gallon or cost per cubic yard. It's a fourteen dollars and forty-eight cents per cubic yard. So in essence, if you can envision for an entire year, that's about two hundred semi-truck loads that get removed, incorporated in the farm field, and then, and they have to meet all the EPA requirements and testing, too, as well, for that amount. And it all gets completed for approximately ninety thousand dollars, which really helps keep, we just talked about the audit. It's one of the items that really helps keep the costs down for wastewater treatment within the community.
Very beneficial, too, for the farmers, too. So it's win-win. We're lucky to have them, 'cause I think, as I recall, some of the other people who were bidding for this business were a whole lot more expensive.
Actually, in two thousand and nine, the second lowest bidder was about ten percent higher than the price that we're seeing today with the continuation. We always try and take a look back and see, hey, should we continue this? Should we rebid it? This is a very good price, and, and we'll reevaluate it and bring it back to the board next year as well, if the board approves this, this evening. So one, less than one percent is not bad.
I guess I make a motion to authorize continuation of the biosolids hauling and application contract with Stewart Spreading Inc. with the allowance, with the allowed Consumer Price Index increase of point eight percent.
Second. The motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trust your work.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries.
That's all, Alan.
Police Chiefs' report?
Thank you. The only item I have tonight is I'm seeking board's consideration to authorize the purchase of a two thousand and seventeen Ford F-one-fifty crew cab pickup truck from Rod Baker Ford, the associated emergency equipment from Fleet Safety Supply, and the installation of the equipment from our installer, Nick's Emergency Lighting, and more, in the amount of forty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventeen cents. This vehicle would be assigned to Commander Ruggles. Currently, Commander Ruggles drives a sedan, a passenger car vehicle, and in many instances, sometimes several times a week, he's required because of his positions as both the Special Events Coordinator and the Deputy Director of Emergency Management. He's required to move equipment around the town, whether it be a light tower, a trailer, or another piece of, a camera trailer, or another piece of equipment. So in those instances, he must go get another vehicle over at the Pima Garage, which is kind of taking away time. Additionally, as his position as Deputy Director with EMA, in our serious weather events, whether it be snow, flooding, heavy rain, or anything in between that we sometimes experience here in Plainfield, he's sometimes hampered getting around the village and getting to respective assignments because of the passenger vehicle he's driving. So we would be looking to purchase a vehicle for the commander position to utilize those type of uses. His current vehicle would then be handed down to a school resource officer, and then one of the older vehicles would then be sent to auction. The purchase of this vehicle did come over, the total cost did come over budget of fourteen hundred and seventy-three dollars. However, in a previous vehicle that had been approved by the board, came in well over seven thousand dollars under budget. So we still have sufficient funds in our capital budget for the purchase of this vehicle. So I would be seeking the board's authorization to purchase the Ford F-one-fifty, including the associated emergency equipment and the, from Rod Baker Ford, I'm sorry, the associated emergency equipment from Fleet Safety Supply, and the installation of the equipment from Nick's Emergency Lighting, in the amount of forty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventeen cents.
So moved. Question, oh, I'm sorry, question on the painting. A lot of the police cars are painted with a Plainfield design. Some of them are unmarked. I noticed the paint line in there says monochrome, so I assume you get only one color with the order. Are we gonna leave it at that, or are we gonna?
We're, we're just gonna leave it unmarked.
Okay.
Take-home car?
It would be a take-home car, yes.
I will once again beat my drum on the request that we go over all the vehicles at once next year, rather than one every other month per department. It makes accounting purposes for us much easier to remember how many vehicles we've purchased and how many we're getting rid of all at once, rather than scattering it throughout the year. My other question is, is how much money would be, would be saved by spending forty-one thousand dollars on this vehicle compared to how much time is he using to go to the garage to get another car to hook up the trailer that he needs to take around?
Well, if you've been to our Pima Garage, in many instances, you have to move vehicles around to get the other vehicles. It's not much bigger than this room we're sitting in right now. So not only is it the time to go over there, to move vehicles around, and then bring it back to wherever he's picking up the additional piece of equipment. So again, depends on the circumstances, but you're looking at least a half hour for him to get there, get everything hooked up, move out to the site, and then again, when he's returning, at least a half hour. But again, that time could vary depending on circumstances and instances and things like that.
I guess I would confer or agree with trustees' comments regarding the, the purchase or the, the listing of vehicles. I think that makes a lot of sense. I don't know if there's any reason, not necessarily for you, Chief, but really for the whole village, if we can't kind of, I know we budget for them, so maybe if we just list them out initially or early on, and then, or whenever the, the best time to buy them is, and then, even if we space them, but at least maybe we approve them at a certain meeting. So then it's really kind of simple and easy to understand, okay, how many are we buying, how many are replacing, how many are going to auction, and it's all in one meeting. So I would certainly agree with, with that thought.
Got any comparative analysis on if we would actually save a substantial amount of money, or even a small amount of money, should we go to a couple different dealerships, bid it out, and say, we're gonna buy X amount of vehicles this year? Here's a list of them, kind of what Trustee Ojo, in addition to his accounting comments.
Traditionally, what we've gone through is, we've used either the Will County Governmental League that have already done some bidding on doc, vehicles. The state does a bid process as well. And then, as has been our practice, typically, we take those state or Will County Governmental League or other cogs that have gone out for bids, and then we, we do talk with our local dealerships. That was a unwritten rule by the board from before, so usually then we go to Rod Baker Ford or to the Chevy dealership and ask for them to take a look at that price. That's typically how we've done it. I can tell you that the collective bidding that goes through either the state or through the Governmental League or the like, sometimes, well, I can tell you, we, as an individual community, we won't be able to beat those prices. But that being said, some groups have better prices than others depending on the, the vehicle.
Particular instance, this evening, all the specifications, everything in the vehicle look great. As far as a policy standpoint, I'd be happy to have a conversation when the whole board is here, if we want to change our policy moving forward. But, you know, we don't have two board members here this evening, but I'm gonna support the agenda item tonight. But I would think a conversation with the whole board about, you know, moving forward, you know, it's not a bad idea.
I'd like to put that on a call. We, we, we purchase, it's much easier for us, the future boards, to understand, looking at, we, we spend a ton of time on your budgets every year, and your budget for the vehicles that you're gonna have throughout the year. So what's the harm in one meeting saying, okay, Alan, this is your meeting for your vehicles, approved or not approved? Yes, 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 no, 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 versus just scatter shot throughout the year.
For discussion? I'm in.
Now, I will tell you, we, I'm happy to do that. But, you know, just, just understand that there, I don't want you to think there isn't a rhyme nor reason to how, how these things are planned out. You know, typically, we do, after the budget is approved, then we get an opportunity to take a look through, you know, in the case of the police department, they'll spend a certain amount of time taking a look at the inventory of squad cars that need consideration. Alan does the same thing with his large equipment, which is separate from his small equipment and the like. So we, we tend to spread it out because it allows for us to be able to manage our time a little bit differently, but I understand the point that you're bringing up. Perhaps there's a way we can take a look at doing what you are talking about in a slightly different format, or perhaps in the format.
I just, I, I just have an issue with approving budgets without knowing what the vehicle that they, if Alan knows he needs a salt and butter, or something like that. Budget board, that's great, but I don't want to know, and they're asking for money that is not necessarily, he knows he needs it or not. I'd rather them do the evaluation of their departments to know right away, we need this next year, or in two years, or in three years. And once you start the spreadsheet, it can go out, you'll know when the car's gonna break down, unless it's unforeseen circumstances. And then you can budget appropriately, rather than budgeting the money first and then spending later. And if we don't spend it all, great. But I just, it's, it's, I think that's a problem with government, and the way it works is they, they budget ahead of time, and then they spend the money, and I'm not saying here, but a lot of places will, well, if we have the money, a budget, we might as well spend it. If it's not on this, we'll spend it on that, because it's already been allocated. And I don't necessarily agree with that.
And I will say, during our budget process, you, you should see, again, this year, we will have that capital discussion. We usually identify each division's needs as far as what they would like to purchase, how many plows, or how many trucks, or, or squads. It's usually identified early in the process. The specifics may not be there as far as the actual quotes, but there's an intent of, let's say, two hundred and fifty thousand for the police department, and their intent is they're going to buy X, Y, and Z with that. That's usually presented at some level within the budget process. We'll definitely expand on that, and we'll look at options. Maybe we can get some sort of consolidated approval along the lines of a May timeframe. Sometimes, the police have to buy things prior to our fiscal year starting, so you've seen those approvals happen in the past. So we'll talk at a staff level and see what makes the most sense, if there's a way we consolidate it a little bit better. But hopefully, we do have a vehicle replacement plan within each division. It's usually presented at one of the budget sessions, so we'll get going on that for next year.
But with that discussion, whatever date that committee, the whole meeting is, if there are any different variables that we may create that might make your life absolutely miserable in the vehicle purchasing process, we need to know that.
Right.
Obviously, I'm confident everyone on the board here wants to save the taxpayer, you know, taxpayers' money and keep costs down, but we also want you to be able to do your job. So please, if there's ideas that we have that are, you know, that we're not gonna see the ill effect of it, please make sure that we're made aware of that when we make that policy decision.
There's a persistent rumor that if you budget it, it will get spent, and you're right. There are some that do. For what it's worth, the village has never done that, at least since I've been on the board. And a good example is, this year, they have two point four million dollars we're putting into capital fund because we didn't spend the budget. It's money that we have set aside. So we've underspent our budget every single year I've been on the board.